This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. The notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 18th, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbor.com and on bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The file entered into my left and right of council chambers. Chief, can you read us the pleasure of allegiance?
The United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Foster.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Hi, she's on since.
Uh, Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
At the same conference.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Councilman Pustonik.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Yeah.
Borough Administrator Huber.
Here.
We have a pass, um, the art of, the art of Minnesota County had gotten the recognition from us for the lead of September 8th to the 14th. Just want to acknowledge that we'll be sending a proclamation over. Uh, approval of minutes may have a motion to approve minutes as distributed for September 3rd, 2024, and regular session. So.
Second.
Welcome. Councilman George.
I have to stand and understand that you.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Pustonik.
Yes.
So, um, Borough Attorney, what did you do?
No, we just put it on for the next.
We take this for the next one? Because we don't have a form, I moved this, these minutes in tables. And now I'm going to move on to council reports. I'm going to start off with Councilmember Hale.
My name is Matt Hale, I'm in the Economic Development Committee, and I do have a couple of announcements. Um, first of all, a big huge shout out to Rebecca Hirsch and the entire team at Nature Island Park, um, for Arts in the Park, and then followed immediately by the Time White Garage Sale. I mean, two big events, um, right back to back, um, especially taxing them. Both were a big success, and Rebecca and her team deserved a great amount of credit for that. So, um, thank you to, to both of them. Um, tonight, we're going to have a public hearing on our redevelopment plan for eight, ten North Second. Um, we'll, we'll talk more about that at the public hearing, but I did want to report that the planning board reviewed it, and in terminology that only planners can love, they found it not inconsistent with master plan, which means that it is consistent with the master plan. Um, and in particular, that it meets many of the goals specified in the master plan, including flexible design options and strategic info. It's a formal project, but in comparison to others, but I believe it's a good one. Um, I also wanted to, to let people know, um, that, uh, under the leadership of Mayor Foster and the Economic Development Team, um, the, the councils and, and staff have been reaching out to many new different, um, options and, and opportunities to try and improve business development in the park. Um, in particular, we've been attending various conferences and workshops throughout Middlesex County and the state, um, to try and raise the profile of the park. Council President Hirsch and Councilwoman Canavera actually went into Atlantic City right now that focuses on both housing and economic development issues. Um, I recently attended a number of different, um, conferences and, and meetings. Um, just a few are, are, one about incubating, uh, ways you can encourage incubating of startup companies, another one Orthodox Jewish Business Roundtable. Um, and we have upcoming scheduled for Middlesex County Business Development Summit, the Choose New Jersey Quarterly Meeting, and a Woodbridge Regional Economic Development Conference. The goal again is to try and attract more businesses to HP. Um, so I wanted to thank Terry and, and the mayor very much for sort of encouraging and pushing those outreach efforts, if you can. Hopefully bear some fruit, um, in the, in the near future. Um, lastly, uh, we're all very excited about the long awaited opening of Super Fresh this Friday. Um, it really was a team effort to move all the levels of government to get to a supermarket as fast as possible. Um, and, and I wanted to particularly thank Community Center staff and Food Pantry, along with Nature Island Park, um, and even some of our existing businesses, like Park Deli and Lot 27, which stepped in to fill the void, um, during, uh, the time that we were supermarketless, um, particularly with seniors and those most in need. So, um, uh, it was a great effort by a lot of people to make sure that we, we did what we could, um, until a supermarket came, one is coming on Friday. Um, I also wanted to just say to people that every new business is going to face things and hurdles as they open, it's just the nature of the beast. Um, I'm very confident that Super Fresh is going to be, uh, the, the best supermarket that Highland Park has ever seen. Um, it is a new business however, so let's give it some slack and give it a lot of shopping dollars, um, as we kick off. So, um, uh, I, I, I am sad and unfortunately that, that family obligations out of state are going to prevent me from attending, um, this Friday's ribbon cutting, uh, cutting. Um, but I'm excited to go shopping as soon as I get back, right as soon as I get back, like literally off the plane as I get back. Please go shopping, go to Super Fresh, shop, shopping. Um, uh, let's make this a great opening for Highland Park. That's all, have a mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George, I'm the liaison of the Public Safety Committee. Um, reporting for today's September 17th. I just want to say echoing Congressman Hale's remarks, it was a great yard sale Saturday. The weather couldn't have been any more perfect. It always, to me and my family, it's always the autumn kickoff, because you know autumn is coming. Uh, it was just delightful, the volume was great, made some money, got rid of a lot of stuff, everybody did the same thing. And, um, as Councilman Hirsch would have said, if he was here, uh, we're in the middle of a pickup, uh, as a result, which we always do after the yard sale. I don't be running while we need. Uh, also, Arts in the Park was another perfect day, a crowded event, shows the diverse activities that Highland Park has, served by, served by the, uh, and enjoyed by the diverse audience that we have here in Highland Park. Um, with the Super Fresh opening, I just want to say that another tradition that, um, I, I think all members of councils have enjoyed over the years, which is the Isle Seven Conversation. Seems that we always butt heads and have conversations with members of the public or each other in Isle Seven, so I'm looking forward to that as well. Library Report, here's another great opening. The library is reopening. The temporary headquarters at 901 Raritan, which is at corner 10th across from the ice cream shop, uh, will be shut down as of next Wednesday, September 25th, for transition of facilities, holdings, and staff, uh, for something of a retraining on the new facilities, um, including the new Polaris, uh, uh, computer system, um, at the main library. So, we're looking forward to a soft reopening at some time in mid-October. I spoke with the executive director today, we were on Monday. It appears that, that is not quite certain, because we have seen, um, number one, when the roof is completed, and number two, when the staff, uh, is fully back in service. Uh, we're looking at somewhere right now about the middle of October for soft opening. There will be a formal opening and rededication in November, and there'll be more details on that. Right now, the roofing contractor is finalizing the ductwork, because they will be rebuilding, getting new ductwork for the HVAC seal on the roof. The architect has gone over the plans there, um, hoping to have that done next week and start the installation letter permitting. The Public Safety Report, our Public Safety Facilities Services have a short memorial for the 9/11 fallen emergency responders on the morning of September 11th last week. It was a morning exactly like you read 9/11 in 2001. Bright, sunny, quiet, a little pinch of autumn in the air. Um, and we had the ceremony concluding at the same time as the first plane strike at 8:46 AM. Again, we thank all our first responders and resources. The Police Department will have speakers for discussion of firearms safety and storage tomorrow night in conjunction with the Human Relations Committee, uh, and some of the other towns will invite it as well. At the Community Center from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Program will look at safe practices with unsafety, discussion of the risks and consequences of ignoring the simple home procedures to maintain safe gun possession and use. Hopefully it won't, uh, be a discussion of any type of political issues with gun safety, discussion with events of the past month, uh, war, of horror stories, but concentrating on what people can do to make their homes, their children, and their families safe. In response to questions over safe overnight lighting in the triangle, the police started observation conditions throughout the triangle at night and gathering information about the actual lighting there. This project is ongoing, and our department will be collating and then reporting unexisting conditions and any conclusions and recommendations to come out of the study. On SWAC, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, this Friday, September 20th, is another event. Uh, you may be lining up for the opening of Super Fresh, but it's also National Parking Day, and SWAC will be having a parklet setup at the former Bergiloto, which is now the Lower Raritan Watershed Boat Building School. Parking Day is a one-day global event where people across the world temporarily repurchase, repurpose, street parking spaces and convert them to tiny, tiny parks and places for art, play, and activism. You may have seen them before in towns where flatbed trailers are set up like sidewalk cafes, and we have versions here on South Third and North Fourth. Parklets are a growing part of downtown redevelopment and renovation, so please load up your groceries, drive now from Super Fresh, and come and enjoy reusing the streetscape on all of our parklets and learning what SWAC has been advocating as part of our renovation of our town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, may I?
Thank you, Mayor. Good night, everyone. Um, excuse, so I'm Jason Stellman, I share in the Recreation Arts Committee. Uh, within that umbrella, I have a number of exciting events and programs coming up. Uh, first, uh, there will be a Senior Health and Fitness Walk that's presented by Middlesex County, uh, be held at Roosevelt Park in Edison, and is on Wednesday, September 25th. Um, after that, Department of Aging is hosting a Trip to Atlantic City, which will be on Monday, September 30th. Um, and a little later, uh, we'll be hosting a Blue Shot Clinic on Wednesday, October 9th, from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m., between the community center. Uh, this clinic is open to all Highland Park residents. Uh, and for any of those three events we spoke about, please contact community centers at 732-819-0052 for more details. Um, also, there are a couple of, uh, saying new Department of Recreation programs that Recreation is still open up for, uh, being with some of the other programs, uh, like men's basketball, women's basketball, um, adult soccer, and adult volleyball, which I hear is doing a lot of fun. Uh, sign up at highlandparkrep.com. Um, and then lastly, just an Arts Commission update. Uh, they will be hosting a poetry festival on Sunday, October 6th, from 4 to 9, at Pino's Wine Cellar at 13 North Fourth Avenue, although I'm pretty sure everyone knows where Pino's is, uh, but just in case. Um, so, I see poets from town and around the state. There will be, uh, feature performers and a poetry competition. And then just want to echo a couple of things that, uh, my esteemed colleague, uh, Councilman Hale, uh, mentioned, just want to, uh, say, uh, echo that, uh, the Arts in the Park and Garage, uh, weekend festival weekend were just fantastic. Um, I just want to give a special shout out to the Arts Commission and Historical Commission for all the time that they put out on, uh, the Arts in the Park Street Festival. They were there all day, engaging folks and showing them cool art projects, selling cool t-shirts, or telling them, uh, and showing some pictures of some interesting historical photos and items. Um, and then just to also just echo everyone, like, please go to Super Fresh often and frequently. I know I will probably be there almost every day. Um, I don't know. So, uh, and that was my report for tonight, cheers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim Chohun?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to again, uh, remind everyone that the sewer water bill that you have received in your mailbox this past week that is, um, reflecting the rate increase that was passed on, uh, due to Middlesex Water Company increasing their price of, for the borough to purchase water. And also, Middlesex County Utility Authority increased their, uh, rate as well to support ongoing rates and capital upgrades. So, um, that increase was just passed along to the residents. And, um, if you have any, um, concerns, you can always email myself or the Borough Attorney as well, I mean, not attorney, administrator, not the attorney, administrator. And, uh, the, the anchor benefit is back again. If you have any changes, or if you went from renter to homeowner, uh, you can update your status at NJ.gov backslash treasury, backslash taxation, anchor. And I also want to, um, echo the success of the townwide garage sale. I also participated for today. It was nice to see some of the residents as we swap out our stuff. And, um, I look forward to participate in again next year. That's my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Borough Administrator's Report?
So briefly, the lead in regarding the townwide yard sale, I just thought I'd remind folks about, especially in the absence of the Council President Hirsch, about the, uh, the bulk pickup this week. Um, the north side, I guess, was today, and probably spilling into tomorrow as needed. And south side will be on, Dennis, you want to help me out?
Uh, Thursday.
Thursday. Thank you. Um, so just remember, these are bulk items, so any remainders from your yard sale, you ask if it fits in your toter, you're looking to get rid of it, uh, please put it in your toter or baguette, so it's easier for, uh, the crews to collect. Uh, so we have to do all the waste that needs to be collected. And as a reminder, we don't recycle this week to allow us the time we need to do that collection.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, just before the Borough Attorney's Report, I'm just gonna give a reminder that please the mayor and council to follow the decorum of the meeting. The Borough Attorney will also address how our rules of order and our decorum will be handled going forward. And I'm just gonna say for Attorney's Report.
Oh, Mayor, can I just, can I just ask for the, for the, for the north side? Today, we had that tree trimming, I did, um, test, Councilman Hale, so there was no, like, starting of the bulk pickup today. Two thousand from PSCNG, I guess, with their line?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
PSCNG's out doing tree trimming.
Yes, 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 so there was no.
For the season, yes. Uh, and it's not going to be any recyclable, any recyclers this week. It's just the bulk that we have left over from our garage sale. Borough Attorney's Report?
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to go through some rules we've implemented since February on how we conduct our council meetings. So, um, people turn to our agenda, if you didn't notice, there's three opportunities in which the public can participate. The first part is going to be after the mayor's report. And during that time period, the procedure's going to be that we open up to the public, they have a limited time to speak, we take all the questions and comments in, and then we make a motion to close the public portion. After we have closed the public portion, the mayor, uh, who runs the meeting, is basically going to respond to the questions or direct any of the directors or any of the council members to speak to those inquiries or comments. Second part, if you notice on the agenda, there's ordinance requiring a second reading. Um, and my apologies, but as the, the public, first public portion, um, we can only speak as to the, um, resolutions and the ordinance as they're on the agenda. Um, for the second part of the ordinance requiring a second reading, again, the public can come up, they can make a comment or have a question. We will then close the public portion, and then the mayor, uh, will either respond to the inquiry or the comment, or direct either many, uh, any of the, uh, members of the governing body, or, um, either a director to respond. Um, then the third part is follows the consent agenda. And during the consent, after the consent agenda, we open it up, and members of the public can ask a question about anything. Um, once they have the, uh, that opportunity, um, we're going to close the public portion again, and then the mayor again is going to either respond or direct any members of the governing body, or a director to respond during all. Three opportunities in which the public can speak. And then, once it's closed, the public cannot speak once the public portion is closed. Thank you so much. And Mayor, I have nothing else to work on.
Thank you. Uh, now it's time for my report. And I too want to echo that the street fair was, that Arts in the Park was an amazing success. We had a huge turnout, and I was so happy to be there. And to, like, a perfect, it felt like a perfect summer's day, and everyone was out, and it felt really good to be around each and every one of us, and all the Highland Park folks that I ran into, and friends from out of town. At that event, we also had the Public Information Committee present, and we were doing a survey, and we wanted to see how can we effectively communicate with all residents? And as we all are aware, we get our use, our news sources from many, many different places these days. It is not the typical via newspaper, get your news, or listen to one radio station. Matter of fact, radio stations have seemed to be dying out quickly too. So, we need to know how do we communicate with all sectors of our community? And to do so, we, at the Public Information Committee, took time out to put a survey together. To access the survey, you can go to HTTPS slash slash tiny URL dot com and backslash three U C E five H R, five two H R. So, we will have this information on our website, so please go to the website. You can scan the QR code to get the survey on your phone, or to fill the survey out there, and just let us know how we can more effectively communicate with each and every one of you. And for completing the survey, there is a gift card that is available. So, please, go to, uh, and fill that out. Let us know how we can better and much more effectively communicate with each and every one of you, because we do want to hear your concern, and we do, we do appreciate you interacting with us. That said, I had the opportunity this, this past weekend to attend two wonderful events. And one is the Lower Raritan River Watershed and Seawat. They were here in town, and these are people who are protecting our waterways and making sure that we have clean, fresh drinking water. And as you may be aware, that there is a water issue globally, and if we don't start looking at ways of how to protect and to have clean, fresh water, we will be having some issues in the not-too-distant future. So, these folks, about a hundred volunteers are, uh, volunteered themselves to make sure that our waterways are safe, it's clean, and we have good, fresh drinking water. They're going to be doing a lot of surveys around towns. If you see them, and they, they may stop and ask questions of you, please help them fill out that survey as well, because drinking water is something that we all need. Um, and the last, no, one more. The Chinese, this is Chinese Autumn Moon Festival. So, Chinese Autumn Moon Festival has started. I went to the Highland Park Chinese Association event they had in Donaldson Park this year. If you remember, last year, they had a full event, um, in the farmer's market lot. This year, they scaled back, but they're gearing up for a full event next year. So, we on the lookout, they'll be back next year. Um, I want to wish everyone from our Chinese community a wonderful Autumn Moon Festival. And, um, speaking of festivals, if you notice as you were coming in the front door, or if you went to the community center, you see the beautiful fall decoration that's out. And I want to thank Kim and all the helpers at the community center for making Borough Hall and the community center look much more like fall and much more welcoming. Um, a new program that we have started. This is a new initiative, and it's bringing government to the people. Oftentimes, people don't have time to come to council meetings, or maybe they have questions when they watch the videos, they, the questions leave unanswered. And what, what, uh, what a new program that I've started is bring government to the community. So, we want to go to different districts, and to be able to set up and have council meetings and have Q and A community forums. So, the first one will be on October 8th. That will be at Maryland Street, and we will have members from police, fire, first aid, OEM and CERT, and council members present, including myself. And we'll be there to ask and get questions that you may have wanted to ask from us, and to get more information and to, to communicate with you much more effectively. So, that's the goal, is to provide more information to the people and to have better and much more effective communication tools. Um, that's, that's it. Oh, that's my final report. Um, I will be sending out more information on the community meeting, bringing government to your community. Information will be posted on the website, and will be disseminated information in those neighborhoods. We plan to go to all, Highland Park is made up of 13 districts. We plan to go to all 13 within the next, this year and the next coming year. Thank you, and that's my report. Okay. Now we go to public participation. Total time allotted, total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes per speaker. Limited to items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended via Zoom. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name and address.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Colleen Tyler. Um, I am at 142 North Sixth Avenue, and I've been a resident here for nearly 40 years. Um, ours, my, my husband and I's son, um, was born and raised through the Pulse system here. So, I have a lot of experience and connection to Highland Park. Um, first of all, I want to also, um, compliment the council and, and the mayor for all their accomplishments on behalf of our town, including the recreation program. Um, Highland Park is a food pantry, teen center, community center, with senior programming, all the arts fairs and festivals, and music events, farmer's market, and accessibility, accessibility efforts with street improvements. And these are all some of the things. And I think the Borough Council really deserves those things for all those things. Um, which leads me to why I'm here tonight. And this is concerning, um, Resolution 2 dash 23 dash 77, which is the applicable for, um, letter of resolution for the New Jersey Cannabis Regional Authority Commission, the annual renewal, um, in the store on job operating in our town. Um, with all these programs, it's obvious that the council and the mayor have a lot of, um, interest in, in supporting the town and the residents and making it the best town possible, which leads to my question, why this interest in promoting the, um, cannabis dispensaries? As many as six are permitted to actually take a shop here? And it's a big why to me, because I don't see the benefit to our town in any way. I have a deal with the vice, they talk about wellness of your various enterprises, and I think it needs to be made clear that these are not health food stores. These is nothing about having to do with wellness. This has to do with businesses that are selling to adults.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I don't, um, mind altering substances and other substances. There are going to be as many as six in our town. What is the effect going to be on our population? And in particular, the youth of our town? I guess it would be an, uh, consequence. And I urge you, council, to really think about long-term effects of having six cannabis shops in our town.
Please announce yourself.
Maryabotila. Uh, regarding Resolution number 924229, council support of a sea verse renewal for a pot shop? Please vote no. For folks who may not be aware. For folks who may not be aware, council has ordinance for six marijuana stores to sell very potent THC recreational marijuana products, none of which are approved by the FDA. Council has also ordinance for marijuana consumption lounges and an unlimited number of marijuana dispatch offices. None of these locations has any buffer from our schools, parks, playgrounds, houses of worship, or anyone's home. Council has given permission to people for years that have benefited from everything that Highland Park has had to offer. But now, it's very disappointing, some of those folks, such as Sal Raspa of Raspa Jewelers and Teddy Parto, who was a former Highland Park police officer. They have a business together to sell recreational marijuana products on Raritan Avenue, right across the street from the dojo where children go to practice every day after school. Given that their son Stephen is another example of who council approved to be involved in selling marijuana in Highland Park at a location right near Carson Park and a block and a half from Irving School. For those of you who share our concerns, please feel free to contact me at M B O T T E O N at Verizon dot net. Also, please be aware that all three judges in the New Jersey City appellate division agreed with us that our lawsuit on these matters should go forward. So that is what is happening and we are very grateful for that. And again, please vote no on Resolution nine twenty-four two-two-nine. Thank you so much.
Hi. Lois Lovey, North Second Avenue. Mayor's report. Townwide sale, terrific. Perfect weather, fabulous turnout. We don't need masks, we need to do this more often. I get two of the council people's sales, that's fun, but two new items for me. And, and I wish, really, this is recycling at its very best. Even though the trash has to go out the next day, it's going to go out anyhow. So instead of mattresses sitting through months and months, even though they're supposed to make an improvement, I know. But you don't need a map. If you do it three times a year, I had maps, I was giving them out to people. They didn't know they were at Century Twenty-One. You just drive, you get lost. I got lost. I mean, I said, oh, I'm somewhere, I'm turning left, right. You just look for the snuff. But you people don't do this, so you don't know. You want to communicate with residents before computers in like, probably the early nineties, maybe not late eighties. This town put out a booklet, a list of all businesses. I had to ask twice that hadn't been taken off. But it was out for years and years, it was free. I don't remember how it was given out here, there, or when. It was a printed booklet and it had every business. And then, this building could communicate and tell the businesses to please obey the staple and price every article for sale. I haven't been back to Fresh Mart or whatever is the new one where Quick Check was in Long Regent. Nothing was priced in July. I'd like to hear many of you who shop there, they've actually put price tags on. So that's another way, Mayor, to communicate with residents. The Chinese festival, when it was at the farmer's market last year, I went. I could read some dynasty names and symbols, but I can't read the food truck that I want to buy Chinese food, but it's not in English. So I don't know, maybe you guys can read that. And, and what was the effect of, you're having a Q and A October eighth, where?
It's going to be on Maryland, right by Irving School.
Irving School. Thank you. And don't forget, you must, someone must order the beautiful mousse every day. Thank you for now.
No hands up, Amy.
Seeing there's no further questions, may I have a motion to close the public session?
Second.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Now, we're going to move on to ordinances. Ordinance required a second reading. Can you please report an ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-two?
In order to the Borough Council of the Borough Final Park, County Middle South New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of eight-ten North Second Avenue redevelopment plan pursuant to local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA forty-eight point twelve A dash one et cetera, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit to publication on file.
Now, it's time for a public, for a public hearing on this ordinance. If anyone would like to speak on this particular ordinance, please come to the microphone. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hands.
No one on Zoom. Let me just mention that the record, I see seven attendees on Zoom.
Seeing that there's no, may I have a motion to close public hearing? An ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-two.
So moved.
Second. Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-two?
Or should do adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George.
This shows that redevelopment plan doesn't have to be a gigantic, massive program involving lots and lots, lots and lots to show that the town can move ahead with redevelopment and go to resounding mass.
Councilman Hale.
Yeah, I just added, I wholly support this, the flexibility of two, sort of another thing that I, I think our staff and our professionals came up with a variety of ways to make this work. So I just wanted to compliment them on that as well. So again, a wholehearted yes.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Ordinance required a first reading. Please report an introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-four.
Ordinance amending and supplementing Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter Seven Traffic, Schedule Ten Stop Intersections Within the Borough Final Park, Cleveland Avenue at Madison, have been interviewed by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-four, authorizing publication as required by law and set by this public hearing for October first, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Right, please report an introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-five.
Ordinance amending and supplementing part two general legislation, chapter two seventy-eight dot seventeen, parking on street accessible parking spaces within the Borough Final Park have been interviewed by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two-zero-nine-five, authorized publication as required by law and set a public hearing for October first, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George.
I'm just, I think we'll discuss it more, but this is the ongoing efforts of administration and the police department. So we advocate accessible parking spaces where the need arises or when the need no longer exists. Oh, yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Consent, now it's time for the consent agenda item. May I ask that council members, if you have any questions that this time to come, with items listed on this agenda, if you would like them to be pulled or separated, may we use a pen? Seeing that there's none, may I have, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, thirty-eight through thirteen H?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Okay, and now it's time for appointments. Tonight, we're going to be appointing the crossing guard, that was mistaken as I thought it was, I believe, in August. Crossing guard, the following, Karen Aaron, Jennifer Calo, Catherine C., I'm not going to miss this name, Lucy Garcia, Carly Gee, Carol Gordon, William Just, Toz, Christopher Lopez, Lucille Morris, Jennifer Peewee, Fox Rainside, Jacqueline Ryan, Deborah Reddick Smith, and Kelly White. And there's no confirmation needed for these appointments.
Yeah, worry through.
All done, okay. Mayor's Teen Advisory Committee, Ethan Paul Chang, and Madeline Maddie Hume. Sustainable Highland Park, Mila Kurat Chu. And, motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kentelhahn.
Yes.
Councilman Diston.
Yes.
Now, it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to concluded nine P M. Comments from the members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom, those attended on Zoom will receive.
Hi, Lois, North Second Avenue. And this is the opening session. Is Tara aligned as well? I haven't seen her for months and months and months.
Any clarification, she was here last week, last meeting.
Okay, good. Last meeting, good. Parking here tonight along South Fifth, along Irving School. They have the cones assigned, say, till three P M. It was after almost four when I picked up this agenda, the cones were there and they're there now. I don't see trees needing to be cut, so I'd like an answer about that. And driving around, getting lost for the weekend, turn left, right, left, right, left, right. Felton Park, I see there's a little whatever, some machinery blocking and no one can use it yet. Of course, pavers should have never been allowed because that is anti-accessible. But who cares? But accessible parking on the street, will that be? In nineteen ninety-two, Councilwoman Joy Northsley, with her bike wheelchair, requested handicap parking on every block, either the east side or the west side. You need it if you want people with access, with disabilities to be here. So that would be helpful. I didn't read the ordinance to see what's the latest plan is. And, and getting back to that business booklet, I think it must have been the Borough's Economic Development Committee, Commission, that put it out, printed it out. They were in charge of filling the stores, seeing that the town was clean and Christmas lights, holiday lights were up. Thank you.
I just want to talk, continue what I was saying, when I had to stop at three minutes. The people who are in this town look to the council as their, and the mayor as the representatives of the people in the town and wishes of the town. And such, we have great faith that they, that you all will do things that are appropriate to make Highland Park safe and to keep it a great community as it is. The, I was never given an opportunity to vote of whether or not five or six cannabis shops are appropriate for our town. I think if they're already granted tomorrow, many people would probably not even know that this is an existence and this plan is happening. So I think it's really, it's not a unanimous decision in town. Unanimous court just comes from the council and the mayor. And I would like to think that the town, the people of the town, the voting people of the town deserve better.
Hi, my name is Sal. I live on American Avenue. I saw to, I'm sorry to get your name. Sal.
Sal.
Yeah. I saw the crossing guards were appointed. I would just like some clarification on for what period of time they are appointed. Or, it wasn't listed in the agenda and I'm not sure if that was in the original resolution that this one was amending. So I would like some clarification on that. Thank you.
My name is Michelle, you'll be Highland on South Four in Highland Park. And I just want to talk about the against privatizing our crossing marks. So I want to read something from InsiderNJ dot com from April of this year. A new study analyzing official government data has identified the states where pedestrians are most at risk of being killed in car crashes, with New Jersey topping the list. New Jersey emerged as the state with the highest rate of pedestrian fatalities. Out of three thousand and thirty total traffic deaths reported in the state, nine hundred and sixteen were pedestrian. This means that thirty percent of all traffic fatalities in New Jersey involve pedestrians, the highest percentage in the nation. So I think that pedestrian safety should be a high priority for this council. Our town will love it because it's walkable. We want people to feel safe when they're walking around town. And I don't think that this town should outsource our responsibility to a private company that is not based in New Jersey, that has had been sued in the past. And these are all things you can find out through a simple Google search because Edison, the town right next door to us, considered this exact same thing in two thousand twenty-three, only to completely change their minds and increase the hourly pay and keep their guards in-house. Also, if you look at the hourly pay for Edison and East Brunswick is twenty-six dollars an hour and they have a minimum hourly guarantee for every shift that they work. Here in Highland Park, our guards are paid twenty dollars an hour and they do not have an hourly minimum guarantee. They could show up and work for forty-five minutes and get sent home, which I have heard does happen sometimes. And so when you think about what are the quality, I think first of all, I think we have some great guards. But when you think about why are we having a problem filling those shifts and retaining people? You may just want to look at some basic common sense math happening here and one, and you can see why someone might actually go work in Edison or East Brunswick instead of coming here first. And I would also just like for everyone on the council, the council, each council member and the mayor, to please, I would like to know where do you stand on the issue of privatization? And I'd like to know if the town is going to consider other options besides, I know you're exploring it, but are you going to explore other options besides privatization, such as increasing the hourly rate? And look at these, look at all these other options alongside of privatization as well to see if there are maybe better options on the table. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucille Morris, resident of Highland Park. I have a question to the restructuring of Highland Park. But since I've lived here, the school zone, there's no signs, no lights, nothing in the street that says we're in a school zone. Now, even a traffic to take, say, how the speed zone. And lately, it's just been terrible with the running of the stop signs and people not yielding to pedestrians and, and stopping and asking us which way is to school. There's no identification yet stating that you are in a school zone and what your school limits. There's no identification yet stating that you are in a school zone and where your school lives.
Hi, my name is Franca, one thirty-seven Hill Street. Um, I want to, uh, speak to, um, I guess, the consideration that's happening in terms of seeing, uh, privatizing the crossing guards here in town as well. And I have some paper remarks, but just piggybacking of what's just, what's just said, um, it struck me that that really underscores just how important those jobs are, right? Like, here in terms of like, how dangerous it can sometimes be. And so, you know, I'm speaking from the perspective of somebody who has three kids in the schools right now, one at elementary, one at middle school, one at upper school. So, you know, we have eleven years that our kids have been, um, you know, going to these schools, another, at least another nine years to go. Um, and so, you know, among the three of them, our kids have probably used every intersection and every crossing that exists here in town that is currently, you know, uh, getting, uh, where the cross, all the crossing guards were here in town. And so, we've gotten to know, uh, many of them over the years, from just warm highs and goodbyes uh, to short chats. Um, and, you know, really, you know, crossing guards are like a fabric of this whole community, right? Just such as the teachers, the staff, the students, and so on. Um, and then needless to say, um, they provide an extremely important service, right? In keeping our kids safe and everybody's kids safe here in the community, uh, going to school. And I've watched them do their work countless times, and it's not easy. Um, you know, every intersectional crossing provides its own challenges, and I continue to be amazed by how well, uh, the crossing guards do their work, just dealing with all of these things and getting our kids, you know, across the streets and through schools uh, in a safe way. Um, we also go above and beyond. Um, just one example, uh, one time, a crossing guard, um, helped one of our daughters get in touch with us when there was a mix-up about a school pickup, and it otherwise would have been hard for them to get a hold of us. Um, so, you know, just, again, just the commitment to the work that they do and to our kids. Um, and so, all of this is to say, you know, these crossing guards deserve a good job, decent pay, and stability. And, you know,
thirty seconds.
I think there are just countless examples of privatization is moving in exactly the opposite direction of all of that, right? Um, because a private company doesn't know the community, doesn't belong to the community. Um, really, for them, it's just about the bottom line, and it's just their bottom line and our bottom line that we ultimately care about, right? And, you know, privatization, I think inevitably, uh, you know, the costs are always higher in the end. Um,
fine.
Likely monetarily, but also in terms of quality and quality of your service. So I really urge you to not consider privatization.
Anyone on Zoom, just a moment, Lois. You're not seeing any of these. Okay, seeing that there's none, you can continue.
Lois, North Second Avenue. How, how many times, Mayor, when you go to fill up, assuming you have a petrol vehicle, does the amount when you just say fill up come to an even number? Thirty-one dollars, fifty-five dollars, zero, zero? How come our new, uh, oil meters, I'm, I'm pardon me, our new water meters? I'm thinking how the oil delivery is always an odd four-digit number. Suddenly, my new water meter ends in all zeros. Eight hundred gallons, so eight hundred gallons is what it's on, is exactly one cubic gallon over the first level of price. How does I figure that if I use eight hundred, exactly eight hundred gallons, and the, and the reading from whatever it was, April, was three one zero zero? And now it's three nine zero zero? Previously was never zero zeros. So either I'm scamming you and not paying enough, or you're scamming me. Because it's impossible to constantly have zero zero numbers on meter. Impossible. I don't know whose idea this is, I guess, no sex work company, you have nothing to do with it, but you hire them. So I wanna know, I would like to have literature on this meters that ended in precisely zero zeros. Um, Felton, uh, Felton Park, I guess, Lanning Board, I guess, oh, Lanning Board. I was there in August in person, and mid-September isn't, wasn't that interesting? I was in person, I could speak, I could ask questions or, or comments. Someone, or more than one person called in, and, and the videographers asked, at one point, the people on Zoom asked a question, and the answer was, sorry, no questions, you have to attend in person, which is contrary to the Lanning Board agenda, which at one point says public session like this does. So either there has to be some kind of warning that if you're on electronic devices, we can't talk to you, but you can talk to us, or perhaps that has to be changed so that's similar to these meetings. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Seeing that there's no further questions, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move. Second.
Proclamation?
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council? Councilwoman Kentelhahn?
Yes.
Councilman Distonig?
Yes.
Just wanna follow up with a few questions that was asked. I mean, I don't know why the cones are still at Barburg. Um, if you, if you know why they're still up there? For some reason, they still have them out. They would have to discuss that with the school. Both Tara and Matt and Council President Hirsch is not here tonight because they are at a housing conference. And at a housing conference, that was noted at the top of the meeting. And they are looking at ways to improve quality of life for people in Highland for a while they're at this conference. The tarp lot is continuing to get fixed. It will, once, once all the repairs and updates have been done on the tarp lot, then it will be open, but not before. And as to the town booklet, when the way of the internet, when the internet came and people could access information online, that's where it was. Um, I know there was a question, several questions that came up about the cannabis, the cannabis renewal of your licenses, the cannabis situation, that was a referendum that was put out by the state of New Jersey under Governor Murphy. Seventy percent of people in Highland Park voted to have cannabis shops in town, so that was done then. As it pertains to the crossing guards, that's still being explored, no decision has to be made. Um, when there is a decision that's made on that, we'll be happy once it goes to, into the Public Safety Committee, comes out of the Public Safety Committee, and that comes before the governing body in our work section. It will be discussed in its entirety, and some kind of decision has, will be made. But there's no decision that has been made on any of the crossing guard situation. Nothing has come before the Public Safety Committee. And once, and once they have done their due diligence in that committee and make a decision, they will advise the council, we will discuss it then, and then a final decision will be made, but nothing has been done as of yet. As it pertains to water meter, Lois, you're more than welcome to bring your bill to the Water Department, have them take a look. I don't know anything about water meters and zero, zero, zeros. Um, as it pertains to Lanning Board, their meeting is publicized of when and how they will conduct their meeting. We decided how we were gonna conduct our Zoom meeting, and we allow people to interact with us via Zoom. I think I've answered all the questions.
No more?
Yes, Tara, Terry?
There was one question, um, the other question about the appointments for the crossing guards, it's for school.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was saying, why school, just a second. May I add any questions? Change in school? The crossing guards are appointed for the full school in your term, just to be very clear.
Question that I asked.
Um, excuse me, um, no comments from the public at this time, the public session has been closed. Um, so whatever question that was asked, I have taken notes, we have to do research, and we'll get back to you. Um, there is no need for a recess, so I am going to move for an adjournment of the council meetings.
So move.
On favor?
I need a second.
Oh, wait a second, sorry. On in favor?
Uh.
Our next meeting is scheduled for November October first, it's, yeah, thank you all for coming.